Mr. Bieber? Mr. Carter?
Hi, Doctor. I will take the CDV.
Mrs. Eisenhower?
Here.
Mrs. Henry?
Here.
Mrs. Hune?
Here.
Mr. Sheik?
Um, Mr. Sheik knows by this he was not going to be able to make a CDV either.
Mr. Tomasi?
Uh, Mr. Tomasi will be attending, but he, uh, got out of work late, so he should be here in the next couple minutes.
Mrs. Wallwizer?
Yeah.
Mr. Reckless?
Here.
Frank Carter?
Thank you. Uh, we'll start off with, uh, student, uh, representatives.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reckless. So, part of our normal routine during the school year is we have students that represent the different school district, different school buildings, the elementary, the intermediate and middle school, as well as the high school. Uh, this year, we are, uh, pleased to announce that Ms. Lauren Stout will be representing the, uh, middle school and intermediate school, and, uh, Ms. Tatiana Almond and Ms. Megan Miller will be representing the elementary and high school. So I'm going to turn it over to our two principals, uh, Mr. Farina, as well as Mr. Jinnich, to do some, uh, introductions of our students.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Uh, I'm super excited to introduce Ms. Lauren Stout, uh, as our ISMS representative for this school year. Uh, part of the, the really deep part of my role is that I get to see students go from fourth graders all the way up through eighth grade. Uh, and it's been an absolute pleasure seeing Ms. Stout as she's gone from that little fourth grader to a kid ready to go to the high school. She is heavily involved in our music program, of course, the band. Uh, she's an athlete for our school. She's a tremendous student, and what is the best thing about Ms. Stout is that she is just one of those kids that students are comfortable with. She has a wide circle of friends. She's super positive. She talks to everyone, and so we are so excited to have her represent both the IS and the MS, as she's just a super positive kid, and I couldn't think of, you know, a better representative of our student body, uh, to share the happenings of our school, uh, with the board on a monthly basis. So, Ms. Stout, go guys.
So, uh, obviously, this is Lauren's first time, uh, doing this this evening. We tried to prep her and give her a little bit of, uh, what to expect, so take it easy on her. She said she was a little nervous, but she's more nervous because everyone asked her, "Are you nervous?" So... Thank you, Lauren.
Hello. So, um, to begin, this month, the middle school's student council is selling Yawa six-in shorty code coupons. Uh, each coupon is five dollars and can be used at any location, and the proceeds from the fundraiser will go towards the VHS, the activity fund. The student council is also planning a spirit week for the month of September. Um, and then sports are starting up this month as well. Volleyball's first match is on September 13th, and the first boys and girls soccer games are on September 14th. Field hockey's first game is the 14th as well. In the intermediate school, meet the teacher night is scheduled for Thursday, September 9th, and picture day for intermediate school students is September 20th. Now, the intermediate and middle school are having a door decoration contest with a superhero theme. Each homeowner must create a superhero that has three strong character traits. Not traits like the ability to fly or run fast, but ones such as kindness, fairness, and empathy. This month, on September 10th, we will be honoring the 20th anniversary of September 11th, 2001. We will also be having our seventh annual movie night on the 10th, where we will be showing the movie Moana. Food trucks will be available on movie night as well. Picture day of the middle school students will be September 20th. And now, some notes from the students and teachers. In fourth grade, students are still getting used to the school and their lockers, but they love being back in school. In fifth grade, students have set long-term goals so far at the beginning of the year. Fifth graders have also said they are happy to be back in school and are having fun. They are enjoying the playground equipment because this is the first time they've gotten to use it. Middle schoolers have said they are also having fun so far this year and are happy to be back with friends. They are enjoying their teachers and like switching classes again. They've said they are liking that things are more normal again this year. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce our, uh, high school board representatives for this year. Once again, as Mr. Farina said, it's an awesome opportunity for us as building principals to be able to lean on our students and work with them in this capacity. Uh, both of our board representatives have not only been doing the job last year as, as high school board representatives before, but also were Mr. Farina's board representatives when they were middle school. So he has done an exceptional job of, uh, preparing their students for when they come on to the high school. Um, typically, we could have three representatives, but honestly, with there being two reports between the high school and the elementary, I felt like it was a really awesome opportunity since our board reps are phenomenal, uh, to stick with the two that we had. So this year, we'll have Ms. Megan Miller, who's highly active in a lot of our honors and AP courses. She's also a student athlete, and was with us last year. She's a sophomore. And then in 11th grade, we'll have Ms. Tatiana Almond, who's actually celebrating Rosh Hashem right now, so can't be with us tonight, but she will also be doing our board reports going forward. So thank you very much, and then take your leave.
Okay, so I'm going to start with the elementary school, and the elementary school is out to a great start. Students are getting adjusted to the new layout now that construction is completed. There is definitely a tie between the gym and the media center, being the new favorite spaces based on students that were asked. Students are looking forward to Johnny Appleseed visiting the school at the end of the month, and he'll read stories at classes and do apple-related activities to celebrate his birthday. And for the high school, kicking off the past two weeks of the school year, events at the high school are already overflowing in the coming weeks. Sports seasons are mostly underway. Boys soccer started their season off on a high note, crushing Susquehanna 10-1 on Saturday night. Girls soccer is set to face Wisconsin tomorrow night in their first game this season. Volleyball, field hockey, and tennis have a busy week on the way with two to three games in each sport. Students will smile bright for our upcoming picture day next Thursday, September 16th. The homecoming dance is scheduled for the night of October 1st, and the homecoming game festivities are scheduled for the following day afternoon.
Lauren, Megan, thank you very much for, uh, continuing, Megan, for continuing, Lauren, for your willingness to do that, to do the, uh, student reports this year. We greatly appreciate it, and it is a great opportunity to hear from the student perspective the things that are happening in the school building for us, uh, as a school board, as well as being a student. So thank you very much, and we wish you, uh, a great school year, and you are more than welcome to stay. But if you would like to go, if you have somewhere else to go, there's a soccer game to get to, uh, again, thank you for your, uh, willingness to help us out this year.
Thank you, guys. All right, uh, moving on, uh, before we get to public comments, I would ask that, uh, Mr. Potager and Mr. Pratt just speak, uh, briefly on the current, uh, COVID situation of the district, and Mr. Pratt on the governor's, uh, mandate that was passed then last week.
Thank you, Mr. Reckless. So, uh, just to, uh, kind of recap, I think everyone knows this, but, uh, August 31, a, uh, order was put out, uh, through, announced by the governor, but really put out through the Department of Health, uh, which, uh, made a mandate that masks would be required within the school system, uh, K to 12, uh, and that would take effect as of today. So that did take effect as of today. We, uh, had a very smooth operation of school this morning, uh, a couple of small, uh, glitches, but really, the students were very, uh, willing to comply and did a really good job with the masks today. Um, as part of this process, we will be, uh, continuing to make sure that students have mask breaks throughout the day, uh, to make, because it is new. Uh, admittedly, even when I walked out the door this morning, it's like, oh yeah, put a mask on, and it took a little bit to kind of get used to it again, uh, but our students did a phenomenal job of that, and teachers were very understanding and worked with our students to make that a smooth process throughout the day. So we'll be continuing that process as we kind of get used to it again, uh, this week, and then kind of get, get ourselves back into normal with that process. Um, I realize there are two sides to this issue, and, and the board heard, uh, a lot of perspectives on the reason why we should be masking, uh, students when we made a decision that the health and safety plan would be an optional mask based off of under students, uh, that were had a COVID case within the building, uh, and now switched that it's mandated, we heard on the other side of it from parents and community members, why we should have a choice and why it shouldn't, should not be mandated. So there, there is definitely a, a divide. Uh, we, we can see that at the national level, we can see that at the state level, we can see that at the local level. That being said, um, this is an opportunity for us to come together. Our goal ultimately is to make sure our students are in school and to make sure our students are learning. That's our goal. And so just from a, uh, statistics perspective, we have had 10 positive COVID cases since the start of the school year. Five at the, uh, high school, two at the intermediate and middle school, and three at the elementary school. What happens when there's a COVID case, uh, our principals and our nurses go through a process of, uh, close contact checking. And so what they will do is they'll see where the individual was that was sick, uh, that was tested positive for COVID, and then they'll look within, and the close contact is six feet for, uh, a minimum of 15 minutes. And so we'll do that close contact checking, uh, and we will then create a list. Our nurse will call all those families that are associated with a close contact, uh, and then have them quarantined accordingly. So, based off of that information, uh, we have had to quarantine 184 students out of those 10 cases so far this school year. There are 98 in the high school that had to be quarantined, 44 in the middle school, and 42 at the elementary school. That's a pretty staggering number. That's 14.1% of our student body that's had to quarantine from 10 cases. Why is this? Because when we were in school last year, we had multiple education modes, and we went to hybrid, and we were able to distance. When we brought all our students back this year, of course, there, you just don't have as much physical space because you have all our students back, and so more students were gathered together. One of the exceptions the Department of Health has made is that if two students are wearing a mask, you do not have to close, you do not have to quarantine for a close contact. So that is an exception that has been made. Uh, there are a few circumstances where students were vaccinated and didn't have to quarantine. There are a few exceptions where students, two students were, um, both students, the person that was ill as well as the other student were masked, and those students didn't have to, uh, quarantine, uh, as a close contact. What will happen now with this mandate is that it will drastically reduce that number of students that have to attend school, uh, virtually from home in a quarantine model, because now that all the students will be masked, that close contact situation will still be there, but they will not have to, uh, be, be at home quarantining for those 10 days. So in some ways, again, whichever side of this perspective you're on, what's good for kids, uh, from an education perspective, uh, is that we will be able to keep our students in school, uh, and when you look at the statistics of 184 students that have not been able to be in, in education mode at some point in time these last two weeks, uh, it does provide us an opportunity to put the focus back on our students and to make sure our students are, are in school. So, things went well today. We're going to continue moving forward. Again, we realize there's both ends of the spectrum on this thing, uh, but we really need to, uh, to kind of focus on what's most important, and that is, uh, the education of our students. Uh, there are, as part of this Department of Health order, legal ramifications, uh, that put us in a position where we need to follow this. As agents of the state, there isn't an option here. I know there's some school districts that are going back and forth, but there really isn't an option. This is a mandate, we have to follow it. Uh, and so I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Mr. Pratt to provide a few comments on the legality of why, uh, the school district, the board, and directors, uh, should be considering that process.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Thank you, Mr. Reckless. Um, I just wanted to touch base on a couple of issues and answer any questions the board members may have in regard to this mandate. As of this moment right now, this mandate is enforceable. Uh, there has been a legal challenge bottom of the Commonwealth Court, where there will be a hearing, uh, conducted on September 16th in regard to injunction. Uh, make sure you understand what injunction is. An injunction means that, that what the individuals are asking the court to do is to table this mandate and then to come back at a later time and to argue its, uh, legal merits. It doesn't mean it goes away immediately, but they're asking the courts to table the mandate until those arguments can be done, until a permanent injunction can be entered into. So there is a lot of arguments and a lot of, um, thing, uh, positions taken on the internet in regard to how this is illegal. At this point in time, it's not deemed illegal until the court tells us it is illegal to do. Uh, some of the ramifications that we have here, just so the community understands, the board members understand, is that under this mandate, it is being processed through, uh, a criminal statute, which gives individuals the right to file claims against individuals who violate this mandate. So whatever side you're on in this, in this case, uh, it could be that if you do not, um, as a board, if you do not follow the mandate, or as an administrator, uh, if you do not follow the mandate, there could be individual ramifications against you, because by not following the law, you will lose your immunity, meaning that the district would be required to represent you, so you would be individually liable for not following or adhering to the mandate. The interesting thing about this law is that this can be, these charges can be filed by anybody. Um, so therefore, it doesn't have to be the district determines office. Uh, it doesn't, you don't have to call the police department. It could be someone who files charges against the district, as well as individuals, uh, on their own accord in violation of, of this, of this mandate. So that's a, uh, you know, most of the time, as board members, when we take action and we're acting, and we're acting within our scope as a board member, uh, we are protected from individual liability, but in this case, the way that this was set up there could be individual liability to not follow the mandate. Again, of course, not until we hear from the court, and it may not be the 16th, but something under that. For administrators such as Mr. Potager, he is the commissioned officer of the state. If he fails to follow the, the laws or the rules of the state, his commission can be taken away. The other issue that we also have to take into consideration as a board is the fact that if professional employees, which are your administrators as well as your teachers, that they fail to follow a state mandate or a state law under, under the, um, 1122 School Code or the Code of Professional Conduct, they could have a complaint filed against their, uh, as an educator's conduct for, for not following through the health and safety of the children. So there's a lot of ramifications, and I'm, this is, you know, that, that's if it's fine. But there are those individuals who support masking, and they could take this, um, uh, the way this mandate is set up, and if you don't follow the mandate, there could be these ramifications. Our advice has been that since we do have something filed on the 16th, we follow through the mandate and that we, uh, make sure that, uh, we wait until we hear from the court, so that there's no violation. You do not want to put anybody in jeopardy. There's been also a lot of discussion in regard to, um, the exceptions under the mandate for, uh, children not to mask. And one of the big main issues is the medical condition exception, I believe it's 3D under the mandate, and the request by individuals to not have their children masked due to the fact that they have some type of medical condition. And the issue that comes up is the, well, the mandate does not state that you have to have medical proof. Well, the key element of this, um, of this mandate is there has to be a medical condition. In any situation, that on a regular basis, the district does not just take the parent's word, um, or some type of form or document taken off the internet as, as evidence of a, um, medical condition. There is a process that is put in place of the 504, um, where we have to go through, uh, an evaluation of the medical condition, because technically, by you stating that, um, if by an individual stating that their student has a condition that, uh, that indicated to you there's a potential for a disability, that they are not able to follow the rules of the school, and we have to go through a 504 evaluation, and if that's the case, then any of our typical, if we, if the pandemic wasn't around and a parent asked for some type of accommodation within the school, you'd go through a certain process of going through it, going through, uh, the doctor's evaluation, you would look at the report, you would meet the guidance counselor, you would meet the teachers, and there'd be a whole process that you have to go through. So the district would have to still follow that process even during this, because that's the process that is in place. You don't want to make changes to your process and dealing with those issues just for a one-time deal, because now you're setting precedent, which may be discriminatory in the future. So our advice has been that we follow the current procedures that are in place in dealing with these requests, and that, um, if, if necessary, to, uh, go through, uh, the, uh, evaluation processes already established within the school. So that is the, um, that is the process. Now, if they do have a, a legitimate doctor's excuse, and there is no masking, uh, the, the, the one thing that we do have to remember is if they are not going to be masked, they still have to follow the CDC guidelines in regards to social distancing. They still have to, US District still have to follow the guidelines in regards to cleaning, as well as disinfecting, um, and also to make sure that, um, that, that, you know, you, 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 if you have Plexiglas, whatever it is that you have, that you have that procedure in place, and you still have to follow those guidelines. That's a quick little analysis that I hope anyone has any questions for me this time related to this. We won't have any answer there, because I have been answering these questions since 5:30 this morning, so I'm more than happy to address them for you. Okay?
Nothing. Hearing, uh, uh, we will move on to hearing of, uh, visitors. So, uh, in the agenda, it states items relative to the, uh, agenda items, but we will hear all the visitors. I ask that you keep your remarks to three minutes, and, uh, Mr. Potager will keep a, uh, clock here, and, uh, we will stop you at that, at the three-minute mark. So we will go in order as, as you have signed up. You can step up to the podium and, uh, state your name and, uh, where you are from, um, and then we will start with three minutes. The first one I have here is Jamie Binkley.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Binkley. I live in Longsmo, Township. My daughter is seven years old, and she attends this brand-new and unknown school. I'm in full support of mask mandate, and I appreciate everything that you've done in order to help us get through this pandemic and keep my children safe. Thank you, Lauren. Have a great night.
Karen Polanski?
Um, Karen Polanski from Tatton. Um, I have an 18-year-old daughter who is deaf. This mask mandate prevents her from successfully participating in school. Um, thank you, Mr. Ditech and Mr. Sal for the clear face shield, clear masks for teachers, but the students are the problem at this point, because she has to do group work. She can't relit, she needs to relit, but we can't force our students to wear clear masks or do anything different to accommodate her. I'm against the face masks, um, because, you know, I'm for all of it. The virus is never going away, and this inconsistency in cycling through is, uh, very hard on a lot of students' mental health. Um, the DOH Section 3 talks about how the school district is required to make accommodations for those who have a hearing impairment, um, those that have a mental health condition. My daughter has a 504, it's not fully being supported or recognized.
Thank you. Bruce Godfrey?
Yes, my name is, uh, Bruce Godfrey. I live in Longsmo, Township. I just want to say, I'm complimenting the board because it is a very trying situation here. But I do want to say that, uh, the, uh, Department of Health Secretary is part of the executive department of the state, and the state has been precluded from going more than 21 days, but I do, that's a constitutional amendment without legislature approval. That would require a court, court case and the injunctions and all that stuff will come through. But this thing is not going to go away. It's going to build and build, and you think it's interesting now, it's going to be much more interesting in a few months from now. A lot more information is going to come out, a lot of things are going to change. I just want to tell you that. I'm not trying to threaten anybody. I'm just trying to be the positive, but I think will be coming very shortly in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ethan Polanski?
Uh, a quick question. You guys have a map to answer, I guess, but were there any plans to enact any of the safety precautions laid out by our health and safety plan before this mandate came down?
Yes, we were putting all the, uh, safety plans in place.
So we were going to shut a building down and go into quarantine? I, I can't remember exactly everything in the process, but that was all starting in one of the buildings?
We were not planning to shut a building down, uh, but we have multiple layers of processes to make sure that our students are safe.
I didn't change the ongoing process, I just mean, but, okay.
Okay.
Um, you all got any email from me today, so you know my standpoint if you chose to read it. I had it from my wife, so I won't reiterate those things, but my stepdaughter, but, uh, she was one of those belligerents maybe referred to earlier. Um, that was her day. There are choices here, this isn't, you have to do this, to be clear. You're just not willing to challenge it. And that's the truth of the mind. Ramifications, the students have to come from person against a person. I understand it's not an easy choice, but I don't want to sit and let you guys just say that it's, uh, we just have to do it, because you don't have to. You could choose to challenge it, even individually, and it's disheartening this year that when it comes up, it's all laid out, and nobody even wants to talk about it. Nobody has a question about it? Nothing. So, I guess that's my piece.
Thank you. Jared Miller?
Good evening. Um, I'm here also to speak about the mask mandates. I am Jared Miller. I live in the borough with my wife and four children, who are all in the school district, um, one with an IEP and one who recently had a battle with, uh, bone cancer. Uh, I appreciate the school district's support, uh, through both of those, uh, situations. Um, but I'm also very displeased about how the school district decides to interpret, uh, this seemingly broad language in, in the exemption section, uh, for individuals who state they have a medical condition. Um, I can state that my child has seasonal allergies. I can send a nurse to administer allergy medicine or Tylenol. You're not going to require me to create a 504 plan and, uh, and establish a disability that they have for that treatment. Um, so I don't see why I should have to take my child to the doctor to diagnose anxiety that they feel from wearing the mask. Um, for what reason? So that they can medicate them, right? Just because they need to wear this mask? Wouldn't you just remove them from the situation? Isn't that the first law of medicine? You know, huh? Um, so I, I'm very disappointed about that. I also sent a letter last week on Tuesday. We received no personal response to it. Again, I don't feel that this school district is that large, um, that we cannot give individual responses to concerned parents. That we received an impersonal email at 8:30 PM on Friday, where we had very little time as parents to react or, uh, to develop a plan under, and try to figure out what we want to do come Tuesday. Um, my children aren't feeling well enough to come in today. And I'll tell you what, I hope they're feeling well enough to come in tomorrow, because I don't believe that they should be wearing this. Um, as a parent, I know the acceptable risk. Life is inherently dangerous and has risks. Um, I feel that, uh, we can weigh the crooks and cons of that and decide that for ourselves. Um, I've also decided to take my tax dollars elsewhere. Um, I, I have no pleasure in informing you tonight that I know all of our children in a PA virtual cyber charter school, not the brand-new one, it's Virtual Academy. I just feel that this is the only way that we can avoid this mask mandate and apply pressure to the school district to in turn, apply pressure to the state, uh, to let them know that this is not acceptable. Um, I'm also here to let other parents know that I'm going to be an advocate for their educational choice as well. Again, um, as the previous gentleman stated, you do have options. You're just choosing not to exercise them. It's the easier route to go with, uh, the legal counsel's decision, and it's the safer route, but it's not the courageous route. Thank you.
Is there, uh, any other visitors? There are none. Thank you all for your comments. Moving on to the agenda items. Can I get a motion in a second for the board director report? Motion in a second? Mr. Potager?
Sorry about that. Uh, so we do have, uh, some agenda items under our board director report this evening. The, uh, first item is to approve the minutes from our last meeting, which was October 16th. Uh, it was a-
You know, even this is people, you guys that like acknowledge it or say what you feel.
It was a, uh, pretty heavy meeting, so, uh, at that board meeting, the minutes are a little bit 90. Any questions relative to the minutes or changes in the meeting? Okay, non-herbal, keep moving on. There are, uh, policies in here, uh, that are the second reading policies. As customary, there's a first and second reading policy section, so these are second readings. There's not first and reading policies that are connected, uh, this year, this month. We actually have went through the- We actually went through the entire policy process after six years. And so we get to start all over again. So next month, we'll start all over again, going through them again. We established that a few years ago to really look at our policies because that was something that we hadn't been doing in a while and put this rotational process in place. So that is what we, that's why there's not a first reading policy and some second readings for this evening. Any questions on the policies that are running for second reading? All right, under item C, there is the approval of Pennsylvania School Board Association officers. There are just a few that have any kind of contention, if you will, or the board would have to make a decision. So it would actually be item one, the president-elect for the year. There's two candidates running there, but we would need to fill one position. Item two, vice president, is just one role. Item three is just one role and there's only one candidate. Item four is one candidate and there's only one person running. Item five is there are three candidates that you have to choose from, but there's only three candidates on the list. Item six, and they're out of order there in numbers, I apologize for that. It's three candidates, but there are four names on there. So it's really only item one and item six, the very last one, the school board secretary, steering committee forum, that we would need to make some decisions on before we make the final vote this evening to place our ballot or our vote on behalf of the school district for which representative you'd like to choose. Any recommendations for the president-elect? Item one, we'll start there. It'd be Sabrina Backer from Franklin School District or David Schapp from the Brentwood Borough School District from Allegheny County.
Anyone have any strong opinions on either of those folks? Anyone know any of those folks? None of those folks. Hearing none, I will take the superintendent's recommendation through.
Doing some of the research and reading through that, my recommendation would be to David Schapp from the Allegheny County.
Is everyone okay with that?
Can you give us a little background, like what's driving the recognition?
Just made more from a perspective of the type of school district and the type of county, more the demographics perspective than anything.
Okay, so less candidate-driven and more the type of district they represent?
That's correct.
Thank you, appreciate that extra detail.
So we also need clarification on number five. Anyone have any strong feeling on any one of those candidates? Hearing none, Mr. Potager, we would love to hear your recommendation.
Honestly, a gentleman's recommendation on this one. The counties that they represent are listed there, Lancaster, Bucks, North Carolina, and Skupul. I don't know if that helps at all or if that gives you any kind of sway of which way you would rather go from that perspective.
Do we know what geography is that closest gets the votes? So that would be Lancaster, Bucks, and Skupul County, correct?
A, B, and D.
Is everyone okay with that? All right. Moving on, committee reports. Mrs. Hune, BCIU.
Good evening, everybody. I submitted the recap online and I don't have anything critical to add to it this time. Just please take a quick gander at the upcoming events. There's two events in October that might be interesting for board members. We can talk more about it at the October meeting, but if you have a second, just make a note of those dates. That concludes my report. The next meeting of the BCIU board of directors would be Thursday, September 16th.
Perfect, thank you. It does have me listed as BCTC in the agenda, however, that is Mr. Sheets. And I don't know if he relayed additional information to his report to you or-
He did not, no.
All right, hearing none there. We will move on to the works, uh, income tax.
Yeah, so there's no meeting two for that on, but the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 23rd.
Thank you. Cola, this is Wallizer.
I'm next to the unit, but I'm reporting.
Thank you. Policy committee is Dr. Carter. Did he give you any-
He just indicated that there was no other additions that needed to be made or no other comments from his perspective.
Thank you. Strategic planning and goals, this is Eisenhardt. Negotiation compensation is also Mr. Sheets.
No, no, no update.
All right, building construction committee. We don't have very many projects we're not doing.
No, no, so just a quick recap of where we are building construction. The elementary school project is pretty much wrapped together. We had one minor issue at the elementary school where a pipe was destroyed in the middle of the construction and so they had to, they thought it was clogged, they went to remove it or to replace it and it was found that it wasn't there. So they did go through, did a quick repair of it while students were there. Evenings, weekends, and we're very flexible and accommodating to make that connection for the areas. It was in the new hallway that goes back to the library area. It was in that section. So that has been repaired. They're waiting for everything to cure and put the new floor back on, just because they, there's moisture that comes out of the concrete. So, but that will be pulled together pretty quickly. So that's the one issue remaining and lingering at the elementary school besides punchless items. The middle school, we are definitely behind schedule at the middle school. We were slated to be done August 24th. There are still some significant work that needs to be done at the middle school. Gymnasium, the library, the new STEM room, which was our old boardroom, the LGI, as well as the auditorium. So we did have a chance administration to walk around with the owner of KCGA, the architecture firm, point out some of the concerns that were missed during the planning process that have resulted in some change orders, as well as a construction meeting that occurred today with the construction company headed by the architect firm, KCGA, but all the different clients that were there from the construction company were there as well. And we focused heavily on that timeline process and what we need to do to expedite this process. They were working very diligently to get the project done up until school started. Of course, when school starts, it's a much more difficult to navigate the building with all the students there, but work has really slowed down. So we're putting pressure back on them through the architect firm and ourselves as well to get that project moving forward. Our goal and timeline is still to have everything wrapped up, including the auditorium, by Veterans Day. But these other areas like gym, the library, the STEM, those areas are areas that are impacting learning right now because we can't do library in the library. We can't do STEM in the STEM room. We can't do gym, obviously, and have any of our gym physical education classes or after-school sports go. So it is definitely an issue that we are contending with and it'll get done. It looks good. If anyone's been there, it does look really good, but it's been a slow process. That's where we're at building the charge.
Perfect. Any additional discussions or additions?
Mr. Weyer, I have a question. So if the board has follow-up questions, please comment. Did I miss my opportunity to ask a question about that? Or is that in this section?
You can do so here, yes, if you'd like.
Okay. I just had a quick follow-up question for the administration as it relates to the student who can't read lips because of masks. I don't know if, without violating any confidence, if you could help us understand, where do we go from here? I mean, clearly clear face shields help staff, but I'm hearing that pain point and it seems to me that there's probably a variety of things that we could be doing. Can you talk to us about that?
Yes, so I will give our high school principal, Mr. Jinnich, and as well as our guidance counselor, a ton of credit first thing this morning. They went and got clear face shields distributed out to all of our teachers so that there was that communication process that was able to occur. Additionally, when the order came out last week, the next day, there was a purchase for additional face shields to that background. They haven't come in yet because, you know, Labor Day weekend, but that order has been placed as well. So there's definitely been a quick reaction to the order coming out and then making sure we had supplies as well as getting supplies out to our staff this morning to make sure that there was that support for the student. So a lot of things are being put in place to be able to support the student directly in terms of the other students and that interaction, in terms of the other masks are required for our students. And that is something that we can't remove. It is one of the challenges, but make sure the education occurs with the students and the teacher. We are ensuring that there are opportunities for that student to learn.
So are you saying that students voluntarily could not replace their cloth mask with a face shield?
Face shields are an acceptable face covering. The CDC recommends the face mask, but face shield isn't acceptable covering. So that could be an alternate option. And that's why we brought and purchased additional face shields.
Okay, so students who are interacting with this particular student could volunteer during the time of that class or that specific interaction to swap out their, whatever they wore to school that day on their face with a clear shield provided by the school?
And we would provide this, that's correct.
Okay, so are we helping students that interact with the students understand that that's a voluntary choice that they could make in support of one of their peers?
Like I said, the high school principal and the guidance counselors have been phenomenal at supporting and communicating with family and supporting the student as well. So without knowing the exact details, I would say that that conversation has occurred.
I can just shout from the back, we would absolutely do that. So, you know, if the teachers were already aware, just wanted to make sure that the teachers could be seen by the student. But going forward, if there were students, I would probably myself going in and sharing in terms of group work, the availability of that, or if the teachers do that, but it's absolutely something we do, we're going to be flexible and supportive.
Fabulous. I mean, we often say how terrific the brand new line student body is, particularly at the high school level, how they're mature and they're thoughtful and they're caring and they make good decisions. So I can absolutely imagine that some of the students' peers would be more than willing if they were made aware that this is something they could do for their friend or their classmate to help her learning and help her have a more positive classroom experience. I can imagine that certain students would be more than happy to do that. So I'd encourage us to encourage them to be aware that that's an option. And then just in terms of the availability of these clear face shields, I mean, we all know the supply chain is across all industries is a rap, right? But please be encouraged to think creatively about where you could get a box full of face shields instead of just waiting for an order from Amazon or wherever you order from. Maybe contact the BCIU and say, hey, could you spot us a case of face shields for a week until ours come in? If they're just sitting on a shelf in a closet somewhere or maybe one of our nearby school districts would be places where we could creatively try and quickly solve the problem to improve that particular student's experience.
No question, absolutely, thank you.
And Andrew, kind of fill that same line. I'm just curious, are reading specialists, you know, our elementary-level teachers where seeing masks is so important, where do they have face shields for them? Have they already been moving those or what's that looking like?
So we've actually had some of our teachers reach out and ask that question. Lot of foreign language at the high schools, another good example compared, you know, in addition to what you've cited about the elementary and all those, that is an acceptable covering. So we are allowing that for our staff.
And have they asked for them, like, help their partner with, or do they already have them?
We did have, we did have an inventory, but with mandate coming, we order more. So that, just so we have additional stock.
Just to wrap that discussion, I would just encourage folks in these trying times to ask for what they need and continue administrators doing all the great things that you're doing in terms of creatively trying to address these unique challenges, but please don't hesitate if you come upon a barrier to just wait it out. Instead, raise your hand, ask for help, bring it to the board if there's an appropriate reason to do so, and just continue to work together to kind of chip away at each one of these obstacles, because I feel confident, like Mr. Potager said early in his remarks, that we can come together and figure out a way to make this as good as it can possibly be for the benefit of all of our students that staff. So props to you, Mr. Jinnich and others, who are bending over backwards to find ways to make it work. Thank you for that.
Is it a possibility that, isn't there like a, is it called metal that's outside?
Yeah, there were-
Yeah, isn't it possible that maybe some of the, that it's very vital that he was celebrating that he would be outside, then necessarily these ones need to be on? I mean, there's always, and I know they make clear face fog-proof face masks as well. They might be hard to come by, but sometimes the masks that they were initially selling were fogged up. So I know with teaching class, there were little people that weren't fogged up. Something to think about, people want to keep it back on.
Any other additional comments?
Mr. Weyer, if I could just make a comment about the cyber charter comment that was made earlier. So just so everyone is on the same record, I think board members, it's important for you to hear this. If a family takes a student out and places them in a cyber charter, that there was an assumption made that I'm going to take my tax money and put it somewhere else. The district is, money is taken from the subsidy of the school district to the tune of, this is last year's numbers, not this year's numbers, so I don't have these numbers exactly, but $16,423 for a regular ed student and $36,244 for a special education student. So that is in no way comparable to what our cost is to educate a student, but that is the amount that goes to a cyber charter. Someone leaves and goes to a cyber charter and the cost there. So just important for the community that's listening as well as the board to know that when you make that decision, you're taking those dollars away from the school district, putting them somewhere else, that gap is still there. So ultimately, it hurts all taxpayers because that has to be raised next year to make up for that. And it's not like it's a one-for-one. I take my dollars and go somewhere else. Our dollars spent here per student is a lot less than what the cyber charers charge us and it's taken somewhere else. So again, $16,400 for a regular ed as well as $36,000 for a special ed student, that's a, any need of a special ed student, from a speech INP all the way through. So just thought I'd make that clarification for the board.
Could I get a roll call on the above items?
Mrs. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Tamaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallizer?
Yes.
Mr. Reagan?
Yes.
Six GA's motion passes.
All right, moving on to business and operations report. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion. We don't know what to do.
Well, that's quiet. You guys are doing great filling in. All right, business operations, the clerk? You're up.
All right, cool. Good evening. Under items A through D are approvals for the fund bills through September 7th. Item A is the general fund totaling $3,724,141.16. Item B is the food service fund totaling $14,478.85. Item C is the construction fund bills totaling $903,560.40. And item D is capital reserve totaling $75,393.88. And item E, just to accept the financial reports, the subbullets A are June and the subbullets B are July, which is the first month in a new fiscal year. So number one was general funds. Number, item two is the food service fund. Three was construction. And four was capital reserve. And then items five and six, the investment schedule and student activity and trust support. And you see in the July report, there's kind of an, or the June report, there's an asterisk for fund downs. fund downs and that'll be finalized after the audit. And then item F is special education and people services. Item one is to approve an agreement for the special education services for this school year with the BCIU. Like prior years, we're utilizing their orientation, mobility and travel instruction. Additionally, we will be utilizing their hearing and audiology services for this year just in comparison to last year, these rates increased by two dollars an hour. Item two is the addendum to the ESS support services agreement that was previously approved. The reason for this addendum is that ESS had a grant and care that had a pay rate, I don't know, was previously approved. This addendum is effective for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Item three is a tuition agreement with Pathway School to provide educational services for a student at a cost of fifty-five thousand eight hundred dollars for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Item H is facilities and maintenance. Item number one is the agreement in line with the presentation that was presented at the previous board meeting, by Private Energy to provide energy project development and management services following the guidelines of PVA at a cost not to exceed five percent. And then item two, the subbullets A through G are change orders in regards to the intermediate middle school project. All of them have a financial impact except for item F, which is J R L, which is simply an authorization assigned extension of three days to the contract. Item number three is to ratify the purchase of playground equipment from George Edley Associates. And this is part of the elementary school equipment project that was previously authorized at the June fourteenth board meeting at a cost not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But quotes appear came in at a hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and it's a question. Item I is to approve the proposal from United Concordia for the two thousand twenty-two dental plan renewal rate. There's no change in premiums from two thousand twenty-one. However, there was, to our benefit, a decrease in administrative services fee, it was only a dollar eighty-five versus a two dollars and twenty cents it was previously. And also a decrease in the network access fee, the downward adjustment to three point five percent versus the four percent that we are currently paying. I just stated like a small calculation, this downward adjustment to the administrative services fee and network access fee, just from fees alone, it could save us approximately seven hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred dollars next year. That's outside of claims and whatnot. That's everything.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions?
I have a quick question on H number one, the proper, the professional services agreement with Private Energy. So last board meeting, we had a presentation and got a sense of all of the variety of things that we can do. Should the board approve this item number tonight? Is this, are there specific projects currently outlined or will we be given the opportunity in subsequent meetings to approve specific projects with specific timelines?
You're spot on, it's a subsequent, that'll tell them at a later date.
Okay, so this initial approval is a request essentially to authorize us to start working together to figure out some projects and partner and then details come later.
That's correct.
Just to engage your services.
Thank you.
Good clarification, thank you.
Any others? Hearing none, could I get a roll call please?
Mrs. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Tomasi?
Yes.
Mrs. Walizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eisenhower?
Yes.
Mr. Ragman?
Yes.
Six EAs motion passes.
All right, moving on to superintendent report, could I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
I can.
So there is one item that was added on to the superintendent report. This is an approval for myself to attend the conference. Part of my contract is that any conferences, we need more approval. I was invited to go to the National Superintendent Forum. It's actually in California, but it's a pretty neat opportunity. There's a hundred superintendents across the nation that have been invited to this. I feel pretty honored to be able to be invited to this. The, the cost of the conference, the cost of the hotel as well as food are covered within the invitation to attend. The cost that would be incurred on behalf of the school, there should be the traveling expenses to go to the conference. So I'm, it is on October thirty-one to November second. I am asking the board for consideration to allow me to attend that. The one pickup is that it is the night of, one of the dates is the night of our November school board meeting. So I haven't missed the school board meeting in nine years, so this will be the first one. The, the question I have for the board is, we could, one, if you're in support of this, that's, that's kind of big question one. Then there's two subsequent questions. We could keep the meeting that night and then in speaking with Mr. Volker, he is comfortable in leaving the meeting for that, for that November meeting. Or if preferred, we could change the meeting to another date, for instance, the following Monday, and I would absolutely be back and be able to leave that board meeting. So a, a consideration, if you are willing to consider the, the conference.
So what directs, is everyone okay with keeping the meeting date as is and Mr. Volker stepping in, the stunt double for the day?
Was that a volunteer or a volunteer?
No, I, I went past him, I did, it was volunteer. It was not a toll. I feel, I actually felt conflicted enough, it's like you said, it's been the first, it's the first, I've left vacations and come back to work here.
We'll get a cardboard cutout of this in a year.
That's right.
Okay, so.
Okay, that's all that's on the superintendent report.
All right. So any additional questions? We will leave the meeting date as is and anything else?
Just looking for a quick update in terms of enrollment. So given that it's the beginning of a new school year, given that last month we had a discussion in which the board supported adding a teacher at the kindergarten level based on a handful of additional kids, can you just give us a quick step update?
Yeah, so a couple of things happen with enrollment, thus point, it hasn't quite settled yet. Mr. Volker's office actually has assumed there's role and roles and responsibilities of registration, it's kind of has been one of those things that's floated around and with some of the reallocation of staffing, it's made sense for us to move it up there because it's closely connected to our student management system, technology which Mr. Volker oversees. So again, a lot of moving parts, a lot of dust that's settling right now, but the good news is processes and orders are being put in place for us to have a very smooth registration process and very smooth enrollment process. So we're sitting at one, one thousand three hundred thirteen students right now as we, as we are sitting here in the CV for the board meeting. That was updated just today and so if someone saw updated or numbers that were, looked a little bit different in your packets previous to that or earlier this week, again, it's part of that process of who's responsible for putting the information in as we make some of the shift. So I apologize if there's different data that you were looking at earlier. There are eighty-three students that were finally enrolled in that kindergarten class. So if you remember, we, we were sitting at seventy-five, we looked like we were going to be around that eighty-five number, ended up, ended up being eighty-three, so our class size right now is sixteen point six, so it's hard to split a kid, but you get the idea, some seventeen, some sixteen. And so that is actually very much in line with our other grades, primarily at the primary level, first grade is sixteen, second grade is sixteen as well. And so as one of those focus areas that we, we look at, which is small class size, these are really, are really good class size numbers and again, appreciate that board commitment to add that additional kindergarten teacher in there. From a pre-reduced lunch perspective, that kind of comes in and ebbs and flows a little bit right now, so right now it takes a little bit of a dip because the, the enrollment for a pre-reduced lunch actually ends right now and then has to get re-applied for, for benefits to continue. So it has a little bit of a dip, but before these numbers were updated, we had some pretty significant pre-reduced lunch numbers that were out there and, and these are updated now, but I know first grade or kindergarten in particular was very high, eighth grade was very high and I believe the other one was fifth grade. Again, these numbers are updated, but those numbers were pushing forty to fifty percent of population or in a pre-reduced lunch sur- circumstance. So I know those grade levels might not be exact because the data's updated, but three grade levels were almost at fifty percent, forty to fifty percent of students that were in poverty. So it is definitely something, as we talk about that change in demographic in our community, that is something we're keeping a very close eye on, it's something I talk to our staff about at the beginning of the school year. We spend a lot of time looking at the data just to talk about, making sure as our teachers, if we look at twenty-some students in front of us, that that's absolutely one of the things they need to consider when we teach and we are caring for our students. So that's, that's where we are right now, our, our numbers are lower than where they were last year, last year. We continue to see that gradual downward trend, particularly again, when you kind of look at the difference of, right now there's a hundred seventeen seniors and only eighty-three kindergarten. So when, when you do that equalization at the end of this school year, we're going to have that net loss of almost forty students. Historically, what has happened is we've been able to make up some of that, those numbers and they have been added on, kind of slathered throughout the grade levels and it's kind of kept us a little bit more normalized, but it is something we're keeping a very close eye on. So this, this will get more, coming to clearer picture in October, that's usually when we do our, our really big one and then we do the official state report for our enrollment numbers in October, that's, that's the official number that we go on. Any questions on that?
Helpful, just any updates in terms of virtual academy? I mean, obviously Friday's announcement, it's only Tuesday and it was a holiday weekend, so I'm sure we haven't felt the impacts of that yet in the virtual academy, but any early reads?
Yeah, we did, we did have a slight uptick. I know, speaking with Mrs. Hamish today, she was busy speaking with families and there was an uptick, so we're at fifty-seven students currently that are in the virtual academy. So that is, that is up and she's been working with families throughout the day to day and starting to enroll more families in the virtual academy as a result of the, the recent actions.
Any other questions? Hearing none, could I get a roll call please?
Mrs. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Tomasi?
Yes.
Mrs. Walizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eisenhower?
Yes.
Mrs. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Ragman?
Yes.
Six EAs motion passes.
Moving on to personnel report, could I get a motion and a second? So there's three now.
There is, Mrs. Walizer, we're going to get Mrs. Walizer. Who's the second? Nope, you're in. So a few personnel items, this is a lot of cleanup from the, the summer. We, we do have a recent resignation, it is our high school social studies teacher who is a part-time teacher. He worked, a part-time teacher, great teacher and also worked on the side with a, with another business and because of the current economy, his business is really taking off and so he's choosing to kind of focus his priorities there. So we have posted that, that is an open position, but it's one that we're, we're currently working to fill. We have some additions of some support staff positions there, food service, two food service staff members in particular, those are the additions, they're really change in positions from where they were currently, their existing support staff that have taken on a different role. We have the approval of Ms. Nicole, Mrs. Nicole Spith as our new kindergarten teacher, that will be filling that vacancy we just talked about in the enrollment report. We have Mrs. Sarah Soffa who is actually one of our, an employee already, she is one of our soccer coaches and she's going to be taking over as the assistant athletic director, filling in for Mrs. Kowalski who was filling that role previously. We also have the appointment of a recess cafeteria, had a chance to meet this individual, seems like she's going to be a phenomenal fit, parent of the school district and just would be really good for the overall demeanor in the elementary school. We have some long-term substitutes that are on here, we have a guidance counselor that's going to be funded with the ESSR funds. We've been talking about where those ESSR dollars are going, we put a lot towards staffing. One of those is adding an additional guidance counselor, K to twelve. We also have Mrs. Cassie Conrad who has been kind of, we like to call her the Swiss Army knife. She's filled in for all kinds of roles for the school district, a phenomenal teacher, phenomenal person, community member that has been able to help us out in multiple ways. She's going to be filling in for assignments this year. We have our fall athletic event and coaches in the personnel section under co-curriculars this evening. We also have some support staff substitutes that are listed for this evening for consideration. We do have a leave of an individual from August twenty-third to October fifth as a partial paid and then what's remaining unpaid leave. And then under F, we have the approval of mentors. And finally, as part of that conversation earlier with the transition to registration over to Mr. Volker's office, there is an approval for Ms. Maria Winko who is the administrative assistant for a monthly stipend to be distributed prorated based off of the duration of the stipend for the remainder of the year. That calculation was driven off of essentially four, five hours a week to do additional registration units. So when you think of like one registration coming in, that's easily two hours, you throw in there the transition with all the re-enrollment, all our students signing up for registration right now, developing those processes and procedures and cleaning those up. And then again, we've been talking about that whole process of transitioning over to a new CIS, it's going to have to be incorporated into this registration process. So a lot of work is coming to that position with the other. That is the personnel report, any questions?
Couple of quick questions, on the idea you were just discussing, do you anticipate that, I mean, obviously you must, that this would be a full position through the end of the year, even though the concentration of registration changes occurs in the first half of the year?
Yeah, so we have only re-enrollment right now for all our existing students. We call that the re-enrollment process with all of that verification of enrollment goes out. We also have sporadic enrollments that happen throughout the year. Mid-year we'll have the massive influx of kindergarten enrollment that happens in January and then in January-ish, really December, we'll start the process of moving over to our new school information system from e-school to e-school slash power school to Mr. Volker?
Into campus.
Thank you, into campus, which will entail the whole process of resetting up registration, resetting up the whole whole process and online registration and all those other pieces. So we do it, it's maybe a full year process just because of all those things that are associated.
Okay, because it includes some technology transitions and migrations that are significant?
Yep, exactly.
Makes sense, okay, thank you. And then I have one other question on item C, number three, long term sub A. So this is a position that's been funded by the ESSR grants. Do we, have we been provided with a job description for the P through twelve guidance counselor position? It's, from, from our perspective, I don't think it's a position that we've ever had before here for any one. Historically, I think we've had guidance counselors kind of assigned sort of degrees within a building. This one is unique and kind of intriguing because it's a K through twelve. So I'm trying to, not that I don't support it in any way, I fully support it, it's just I'm trying to understand more about what is it that we expect this position to be able to accomplish, where will the key focuses be? Will it be academic, will it be mental health, will it be social emotional? How will they spend their time across K through twelve, three buildings?
So my apologies, we, we did not give you a job description, when you said that, I didn't do that. So we do have one, we, we created one, we, Dr. Reese has been taking the lead on this, she's met with the other guidance counselors in, in addition with this new individual to come up with, okay, what is this going to look like, let's create that clear picture for how that roles and responsibilities are going to be shifted. Because each guidance counselor is phenomenal in our school district and while they do that, it's also giving up some of that, that roles and responsibilities that they currently have to someone else. And so we, we have to carefully be able to figure out what that's going to be. It's primarily going to be focused on that social, emotional wellbeing, mental health wellbeing, that's, that's a key priority, at least at the onset. Again, the concept originally was as we transitioned back from a post-COVID world, never, that's right, as we transitioned from a post-COVID world and some of those mental health concerns that were existing, students that maybe were virtual all last year coming back, a lot of other transitional pieces, we wanted to make sure that there was additional supports there. And so the, the priority is going to be at the elementary and the high school and then some additional supports at the middle school. The reason why it's not as high in the middle school, even though it's the biggest of the two buildings, of all buildings with four to eight stands, is we also have that partnership with community and schools, which brings that social worker in and can provide some of that ancillary support as well. So while the guidance counselor will still be helping in that building, those other two that don't have that ancillary support. two that don't have that ancillary support would, are getting a little bit of extra support. Yep, we'll, we'll make sure that job description gets out. I apologize for that.
Any additional questions? Harry Nunn, could I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Tomasi?
Yes.
Mrs. Walizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eisenhower?
Yes.
Mrs. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Wagoner?
Yes.
Six GAs motion passes.
Sir, any additional public comment? Yes, sir. Step up to the mic and.
I think I speak a lot of what you're not, I can address this question to your solicitor, Mr. Pratt. Should we be mandated, mandated by anybody in the school district, say a board member, student, teacher? And they were thought guilty. Can you tell us perhaps because there's a precedent for this already set and what the penalty would be, a fine or imprisonment or whatever?
The penalty that is under the act is a financial penalty as well as a penalty of imprisonment as well. And on top of it, you'll have a criminal record attached to your life forever. That's, that's what the penalty would be in regard to it. Now that would be if you are pressed charges through the, an individual. However, the area where we have the most concern in regard to this would be if, God forbid, someone dies from COVID and they can pinpoint that they were, they were infected, infected at school and due to the fact that we were not enforcing the mandate at the time, that would be a civil action where penalties could be financial and without limitation. Those are concerns.
Any additional court discussions, questions? Harry Nunn, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So who? You?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Is that okay?
Well, you're always psyched.
Yeah, we are psyched. You don't want to?
I've been smiling, feeling pictures in.
There is a, do you mind just reaching in front? There's a little, this button that looks like a one-off button. If you just press that, there's, the gray, the green button should go off, the green lights.